Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock on August 2nd, and I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission. First of all, can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Starkweather.
Thank you.
Here. I wasn't ready.
And I think you did this last, so it's my turn to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. You would join me, please? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emphasize the justice.
Thank you all.
Justice.
Lucas, are any, you have any suggested changes to the agenda?
I do not.
All right. Very good. Next is the, is public communications. The time set aside during this meeting for people to speak on any item of city business that is not on the agenda for tonight. I have two cards, and we'll ask later if there are others. First up is Bill Miley.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. It's great to see my friend Jeffrey Starkweather in his commission seat. My foolish support is remaining as a commissioner. In state law, planning commissioners are cautioned not to think and make judgments based on their own biases and narrow beliefs. When being a commissioner, the guidance is to think and work towards what is overall best for their community now and into the future. It also says, look at the big picture, the community. Commissioner Starkweather, since I have known him for over four years, does this. He has actively, he and I, before he was commissioner, actively worked on the housing element cycle six, giving public input on, in the process that the planning commission and city council conducted. I am a strong believer in deeded affordable housing and affordable housing justice. This planning commission, as I see it, has as its bible, our housing element cycle six. And then I added at the top. Believing in it is key to being and working on fair justice. It's great to see you, Commissioner Starkweather, now and through your current term. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Next up, Brian Akins.
Hello, I'm Brian Akins. So, I, a couple, a month or two ago, I found the time and went to the, there's a term, nice term for it, a meeting that's being taken, taking place trying to determine what to do with the campus, the property that's here. They brought out these beautiful long maps that showed all of the grounds. I got a red pen from somebody and I circled three different items on that because, and explained that the, all of the land here in this estate was actually donated and came before the HPC as a landmark. And so, all of the land was set aside as a landmark for that property. In doing that, three locations were called out. Tennis court, the location we're in, and that infamous stable that's down there off to the left. If you haven't seen it, take a look down that way, please. And so, they started talking about all the different things that they might do with the stable. And I raised my hand and I asked if anyone in the group had ever been in the stable. And nobody had. So, we set up a field trip so we could say some people had. And so, we did this last week. We set up an eight o'clock event. We arranged to have Mayor Sticks that was there. Pamela Grau, who spoke in one of the meetings, asked, we contacted her because she was, wanted ideas. Mara was invited and also attended. Lucas was invited, but he was fairly recently back from his vacation. And so, he was busy. Cool figure. So, we had a wonderful tour then at eight o'clock. And then, because some couldn't, people couldn't make it at that, we had others at 11 o'clock. Susan was one of those people. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be there. Ray Powers was there. And Kathy Nolan and Betsy Van Leet, who both have been very involved in this project, were also there. And so, that was good, too. And so, we opened up the stable down there and got a peek at what it looks like inside. And it was impressive and okay, I guess, depending on what your interest in, in finding out what it was. I bring that to you just because, again, once they decide what's going to happen with this campus and the uses along the way, on what they might use, I'm pretty sure it's going to come before the planning commission based on the many ideas that they were coming for. So, I just wanted to alert you that we do have access to the, to the stable. If somebody on, on the commission or chair has a reason or curiosity to go see what's in there, please give me a call. And we'll make sure you get that opportunity.
So, you're inviting us to visit as planning commissioners?
I am. The more people see it, the more information they get. I love information and I love exposing landmarks to the community.
Maybe we could settle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on, on an item of city business not on the agenda? Sherry, is there anyone online with a hand raised?
No, there is not.
Okay. Then we will move on to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning commission for June 21st. Any commissioners have any refinements to those minutes? Then, a motion to approve would be in order.
I still move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second by John. Very good. Any discussion? Sherry, call the roll on item one, please.
Quilisi.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Bennett.
I'm staying.
Murphy.
Yes.
Starkweather.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have only one site in question tonight, 380 Longhorn Lane, which is an empty piece of property, but we all should have gone by to see it. Mr. Starkweather.
I've not gone by since I returned from my vacation, but I was there before.
You were there before. Very good. No ex parte contacts?
None.
Ms. Murphy?
I have walked the property and have no ex parte.
Same. Walked the property, no ex parte contacts.
I've driven by the property, looked at the property from the car, but have not gotten out and inspected it. And I've had no ex parte.
I'm with Commissioner Bennett. I've driven by the property on two sides, what's available by road, and looked it over, had no ex parte contacts. Thank you all. Okay, then we will move on to our public hearing item. And for those in the audience or online that are not familiar with the process here, staff will give us a report on the case that is before us. Then we will hear from the applicant or applicant's representative. Then, I'm sorry. Before that, we have a time to ask clarifying questions of staff, we commissioners. Then we'll hear from the applicant or applicant's representative as they see fit. Then we will have the public comment portion of this, where we'll open the public hearing. And anyone here present or online who wishes to speak will have that opportunity. After that, we will close the public hearing and deliberate on the case as a commission. Please go ahead. Maura?
Thank you, Chair Quilisi. On June 21st, 2023, the planning commission held a public hearing and considered the request for approval of design review permit 22016 and tree permit 23014 for the development of a single-story, single-family residence and a detached two-story ADU on a slope greater than 15%. The commission continued the project with direction for the applicant and staff to work together to revise the plans addressing three things: privacy concerns described by the neighbor adjacent to the south, the health and safety of an existing oak tree located along the southern property line, a shared southern property line. And question, and they also, the commission also had a question whether the height of the ADU exceeded the maximum allowable height pursuant to Section 10 2.803 of the Ojai Municipal Code. On July 11th, the applicant submitted revised plans that included, include a reduction in the height of the proposed ADU from two stories to a single story and also relocating the structure five feet north, which is further away from the adjacent neighbor to the south, and also
From the big tree.
Additionally, five feet away from the tree. Thank you. Therefore, what the commission is considering this evening is development as described, which is pursuant to 10-2.1102 of the Ojai Municipal Code, which is related to development on slopes greater than 15%. You're no longer reviewing it because of a two-story structure. And your, your review is based on or related to the development's context, continuity, scale, and architecture, which we discussed at the meeting previously and has not been revised other than the location of the ADU. And of course, that it's a single story now and not a two-story. On July 26th, 2023, the applicant's arborist submitted an updated arborist report and tree protection plan and landscape plan that was not in the packet previously. And today, staff received a, neighbors adjacent to the south, they had a concern regarding oak tree number three and are requesting specifically that a chain link fence be around the tree for tree protection during construction as opposed to any kind of plastic tape or fence that might be proposed. Specifically, the material is not specified in the tree protection plan. So, the commission has received a detailed staff report previously, and that's included in your packet, and plans as well. And you've also received a previous presentation by staff and an opportunity to review and consider the project previously and as it is now. And staff is recommending approval with an added condition that a chain link fence be surrounding the tree as tree protection during construction. And since the meeting, or since tonight's, previous to the meeting, the applicant has come up with a couple of other questions that I'd like to refer to the applicant when that time comes. Not sure if you want me to relay those to you now or if you just like to wait until they...
I think we'll all talk about them when they come up.
Okay, fantastic. So, again, staff is recommending approval as, of the project as submitted with that additional, with that additional condition regarding the chain link fence.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Are the areas to be discussed this evening on this limited to the three that you listed? Or can we ask questions about other parts of the presentation that may have been covered previously? But I was not here when that happened.
You can certainly ask questions about any part of the project. It's not limited to the three areas that the planning commission asked for us to address.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just a couple of questions. These are more probably ministerial. But on attachment A, page 5 of 9, going through the conditions, I noticed that they had been changed via the, you know, versus the prior conditions. Specifically, language like number five currently says the project arborist prior to, the prior condition said prior to groundbreaking. And I was just wondering why that was removed.
I'd like the arborist to, to answer that question. How, but I will say that the revised arborist report and conditions are in today's packet.
I saw that. It looks like it's basically like a copy and paste of what the arborist recommended.
Yes.
So, the arborist changed the conditions. And I was just wondering why.
Well, they changed the conditions.
Just some language, nothing.
Right. Well, conditions, of course, were reviewed again. Or I shouldn't say, of course. The conditions were reviewed again because he had an opportunity to.
Right.
But, and the opportunity was because the ADU was moved.
Right.
And so, it's a different situation as well.
Okay.
So, the conditions may be different. And then he was able to review the whole thing again.
Okay. I guess that doesn't answer my question, though. So, attachment A, number five.
Can I, can I respond just real quickly here? I mean, I'm looking at it as well.
Okay.
Typically, with, with a condition like this, prior to groundbreaking would make sense because it provides the action before
Yep.
the cause, right? So, it provides a narrative
Right.
as you move forward. Anytime that we're doing any sort of groundbreaking, that's, that's typical. So, if, I mean, obviously, it could have been oversight on the arborist standpoint.
Yeah, it could be.
But I agree, it should have some sort of action before you're moving forward with some sort of pre-construction meeting. I mean, it should be prior to groundbreaking.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I was just.
Is groundbreaking considered part of construction?
Yes. So, it's just a...
Reconstruction is more or less the same thing.
Yeah. Prior to grading, you could use terms such as that. It's really before anything, any dirt is moved.
Yeah. Okay.
Cool. Yeah, I figured it was just a, something silly. But, and then on condition number nine, attachment A, it says, the second sentence, monitoring, monitoring shall be made at least weekly during active construction within 20 feet of TPZ. And I'm assuming TPZ means tree protective zone.
Yes.
Okay. I was just, I was hoping that that could be elaborated because it doesn't call it out anywhere. It just says TPZ. Like, there's no reference of what that means.
Do it at the end.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And that, that's all I really had at the moment.
Judy, any questions for staff?
No.
I'd like to make a correction on the one of two, the very update thing. There's a statement here that I don't believe is accurate because it relates to me. It said, Howard Commissioner questioned the council's action and indicated intention to remain seated. That was the false implication that the manager put out and apologized for me for doing it. I said I would assert my right to remain seated. If I was informed I couldn't be seated, I would move out to the audience and make public input. So, I would like that to be changed to would assert his right to remain seated.
So, you have, you have the right to make that, make that note. And it would be up to the commission as a whole to make that.
I would like to move that that be changed so that it's accurate to what my intention was. As I made it clear, I wasn't going to physically insist on remaining seated. And I apologize for the people that missed the meeting for that because I think it was totally inappropriate to cancel the meeting on that basis. But it's not my choice. And I planned to come and take my seat if I'm allowed to. If not, I would have been in the audience and I wouldn't public input, make my case. And I think I had a right to do that.
Understood. Okay. Well, for purposes of discussion, I'll second that motion.
Can you, can you restate?
I was going to change it from intention to assert his right to remain seated.
Oh, gotcha.
As it implies I was physically going to demand that I be seated. And they're going to have to pull me out of the diocese here. And that's what the press release that was put out implied. And, you know, I got an apology from the manager that that was not correct. And that, we had a very pleasant conversation. I told him, I don't plan to disrupt anything, but I don't think this action actually removed me. In fact, most lawyers and people in the town said it didn't remove me. But I, that was for later discussion. I don't want to debate it here. I just want to say accurately, that was what I planned to do, come here and assert my right. And that's what I told him.
Can you, can you speak into the mic? Sorry.
That, I had told the manager that I would come and assert my right. I did not plan to disrupt the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think we all caught it, just, just moving forward. So, just in case.
Yeah, so I just want that to be clear in the minutes. That's all.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Sherry, let's have a roll call on a correction to the staff report on item two.
So, this is not a motion to approve it? It's a different motion?
No, this is a motion
To amend it.
to amend the staff report.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the conditions. I'm sorry. Okay. Quilisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up would be the applicant or applicant's representative. I have a card from Ron Cano. Come up and speak, sir.
I'll try to...
As, as the applicant, you are not subject to the three-minute time limit as civilians are.
All right, so how late can we go?
Be surprised.
We've, we've been here for five and a half hours in the past.
I brought a snack, so I can share some snacks. I'll, I'll keep my comments actually short. Normally, I am pretty long-winded here. But I, I, it's really actually great for me to be back in the, this, these city halls. My dad was the city manager, actually. He started his first city manager role was in the town of Norco, which was a horse community out in Riverside. And so, I kind of grew up in the city halls. He then became city manager of El Segundo. And, you know, I got the pleasure of meeting with Lucas and Maura during this process and going down and in their offices and just seeing this. It's just actually nostalgic for me. So, I, I think a lot of times, you know, public servants don't get recognized for what they do. And I just, it's great to be back in here. Appreciate what everyone here does. And like I said, I really enjoyed getting to know Lucas and Maura. They've been really great through this process. You know, I'm not, I'm not a builder. I don't know a lot of the codes that are, you know, being talked about here. But this is a special town for us. I feel very fortunate and blessed that we have this piece of property that's beautiful. You know, I, I grew up camping. We had a small cabin in Green Valley Lake and right by Big Bear. You know, nature is, and being outside is very important to me. I have two, my wife and I have two boys, two and a half and five and a half. And, you know, the reason why we picked here is because we've been coming here for a while. This place has been a lot, meant a lot to my, my, my parents. And I'm just excited to share that with them. So, you know, there's been a lot of comments and questions about trees. I just, again, I don't know all the, the rules and regulations. My, you know, our, our team is helping there. But anything that we can do to preserve the, the trees and, you know, the beautification of the property, we're actually, we're absolutely thrilled about it. The reason why we bought the property just, you know, is the trees. So, we were actually really saddened when, during the, one of the last storms, I don't know if you walked the property, but one of the trees fell down at the bottom. So, we were really bummed about that. But I just wanted to at least provide, provide that context. You know, we're, we're excited to move in to the, you know, to the property and spend, you know, a lot of time up here. So, I just want to provide that context. And thank you for considering our project.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes. Are you willing to go along with the suggestion of putting the chain link fence around that tree area?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It protects the tree. It makes total sense to me.
Okay.
I think that, you know, we, we, again, anything we do, anything we can do to protect the tree, I think, you know, we have made accommodations even since, well, since the beginning of the project. We've made a lot of concessions, you know, time and time and time again. I think this last, you know, this last adjustment since the planning commission, we took the feedback. You know, we want to be good neighbors here. We're really excited. I've got to know a couple of neighbors within the Persimmons Hill area and, you know, went over their house for, you know, first some tea. And, you know, just, we're really excited about, about that. So, yeah. And when things come up about the tree, you know, we want to protect it as much as we can and, and, you know, do our part to be part of the community.
Okay. Go ahead, Jamie.
Have you had any pushback on the color of the trim roof and board and batten area? I mean, it's all black, isn't it? I mean, I, I couldn't tell from the insert that we got, but the, it looks as if the paint was black. The roof, roof materials and call down was black.
Charcoal.
And the frame. Yeah, we were, haven't got any pushback from that. I think what we've been, what we were going for was that stone kind of natural look. And, you know, one of the reasons why we kept it as a one-story is because we wanted it to, you know, why we kept it as a one-story is because we wanted it to, you know, especially where it sits down, it's not very high profile from the street, we were very cognizant of, you know, keeping it low profile. You know, the reason why we do have, you know, the bedrooms and the ADU is because I have two younger brothers, and we all have kids the same age, my wife is the oldest of three, three girls, and you know, we wanted three families to be there comfortably, plus the grandparents to be there, and so we didn't want to go two stories and create this, you know, view from the street that was very large. So again, that's where the background on the ADU came from.
Well, it's even blocked more because you have kind of a berm right along the street.
Exactly, so we tried to keep the stone and kind of, you know, incorporate it into the natural scene, that was the design look we were going for.
No? Thank you.
Does the roof have solar panels, or are you, where would that fit into your plans?
Yeah, we are planning to implement solar panels.
On the roof?
Yes. Please, that's correct.
Okay.
One of the trims is graphite, it's like gray.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I have several cards here, and I'll take them in the order they were presented to me. Talking, we'll, I'm sorry, we will open the public hearing for public comment on this item. First up, I have Andy Bressler.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Andy Bressler, I'm the Mr. Cano's neighbor.
Like every other citizen in the city, you're subject to the three-minute limit.
I know.
Yeah.
And so I won't, I won't go around the horn here.
Yeah.
I just really have two technical questions, and they all concern the health of the tree, and that's, I'm pleased with the fact they've moved it, I'm pleased with the fact that it went down to one story, so I think that's been a real positive move. Because our arborist wanted it to go 10 feet, that's where he felt comfortable, so I just have some questions because we're kind of on the fine line there. First off, I noticed in Mr. Naba's report, his updated report for the single-story ADU, I just had a question for him, because he stated that the Ventura County Fire Department clearance requirement has branches to be six feet above the ground and at least five feet from the roof. And I thought I understood that the fire department requirements were 10 feet clearance from the structure, and so that's a five-foot pruning issue as far as the branches of the tree. So I'm just trying to understand that, because the arborist is looking at five feet, and the Ventura County Fire Department requires 10 feet, obviously it's going to be more impactful when it comes down to having to make the Ventura County Fire Department happy. So that's the one question, and that's a technical question, I guess, for Mr. Naba or the city, I'm not sure which, because I don't think the county's here. The second question I have, when they moved the structure, if you recall, there's a retaining wall around the new structure, and that retaining wall was going to require some excavation, because there's quite a bit of excavation on this property for this project. And my concern is, on the drawings, I can't discern whether that retaining wall moved that five feet with the original ADU, or whether that stayed there and they just moved the ADU, because I can't find a dimension on the new updated drawings that depict that distance. And I know it's kind of a technical issue, minor, but to the tree root system, maybe not. So I just want to understand what that distance is, and I can't find it on the drawings. And there's actually, there's three different ADU buildings on various parts of the drawing, so it is a little confusing, so maybe I just didn't see it. But those are my only two questions. I think the overall project looks great. I think Mr. Cano and his team have done a beautiful job, and I think it's going to be a real asset to our neighborhood. I just want to make sure we take care of the tree, and I appreciate the chain link fence, that was a recommendation by our arborist, so I think that'll be good. So anyway, if somebody could just answer those two questions, so we understand what the impacts to the pruning requirement for the tree branches and for the root system, and how this change in the relocation of the ADU is affected by that, that's my only two questions.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Are those a couple of questions that you can take up with the arborist at an appropriate time?
Couldn't you answer them yourself?
Or can they be answered right now?
Yeah.
Okay, is there someone here that can answer those questions?
The arborist, the arborist is here, and we have an applicant representative as well.
Do I do it now, or?
Please come up.
So I will answer the question about the retaining wall, so the code, in code it says the setback is 25 feet. Our retaining wall on both the south side and the east side is at 34 feet 5 inches.
Okay.
Did you move the retaining wall? Or not?
Yes, the retaining wall moved with the property.
Okay, that was one of the questions he asked.
With the new ADU, okay.
Okay, cool.
Was it 30?
34.
34 feet 5 inches.
Great.
Mr. Naba?
Yes, sir. In responding to the question about 10 feet versus 5 feet, the Ventura County Fire Department states pruning shall keep branches 5 feet from the roof. The 10 feet measurement is an artifact from that initial neighbor's arborist letter that specifies new tree plantings should have mature canopies 10 feet from the roof. The 10 feet from the roof is about new trees, it's not about pruning. So for existing trees, this, the pruning requirement is 5 feet. That's stated in the packet you have.
So less pruning than might have been feared.
Exactly, that's what I went to some lengths in the previous meeting.
Yeah.
So is that a fire code, or was that a fire department analysis that they made that on this property?
No, these are standards that apply to the whole county.
Oh, okay, so that's what, okay, just wanted to be sure.
These are county fire standards, it's standard 515, guideline 420, 418, and I think MULCH comes in there at 416 or something. They have a lot of published guidelines that were overlooked in that initial work from the neighbor's arborist.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
I have a question for the arborist as well, just to clarify, because I've seen this done two different ways in new builds, the, so the chain link fence, is that going to be installed within the drip line, or at the edge, or within the newly established drip line?
Really good question. So we're getting into the nitty-gritty on the shape of the tree, the shape of the ADU, the relative elevations of both, and how do you establish and maintain that five-foot branch to rough clearance that county fire wants? So the answer here is this tree happens to have a pocket in the canopy on the northeast quadrant. Thinking about northeast, that's that direction.
How convenient.
How convenient. So northeast is that direction, southwest is that direction. The ideal place for a shade tree to benefit a structure is the southwest corner, because it blocks a lot of that heat in the afternoon, in the autumn, as the sun is transiting, it just takes that heat off, it reduces your cooling costs, improves all that. So in this case, the tree has a little cave cavity on the northeast where the ADU fits in, so by reducing the height of the ADU to a single-story, it reduces the amount of pruning over the roof. Because it's a valley oak, not a live oak, it has a more shell-like canopy, and so the pruning is to the outer branches, and on the north of a valley oak, those branches are almost dangling branches, hanging down almost vertically, because there's not a lot of light to reach out and catch on that exposure. So in this case, it's pruning that curtain a little bit higher to fit the ADU underneath. And so to answer the question about the chain link fence, that will be both outside and inside the canopy drip line, and that is to accommodate the, well, there's a couple things that change. First off, the initial plan without specifying what kind of fencing to use, made the allowance for straw bale on rebar, so rebars, set straw bales to catch any stone or rock that might slump down and want to, you know, bang into the tree. It's only a 15%-ish slope, it's not a major concern, but it's a good safeguard. With chain link, you don't need to do that, because the chain link will catch anything that's rolling.
Anything large, yeah.
Yeah. In addition, we've moved that fence further up slope and out of the drip line to protect a larger area of the tree's root zone, and so the combination of chain link further to the east and a little bit further to the north with a small carve-out for the retaining wall, that will provide more than adequate protection for the root zone. There is one thing that catches a lot of design phase projects by surprise, and that's when you do the excavation, you have to have room for the equipment operator to take off that edge, and if you put your posts right at the edge of where they're going to dig, then your posts fall into the trench or whatever. So we always give it another foot outside of what they need to excavate, so that those posts remain upright, and that they serve to protect the tree.
Sounds complicated.
It's really simple.
I got a follow-up question with, not with you, but with the planner.
Okay, before we do that, does anyone else have a question for the arborist?
No, so I was going through your revised document, and I didn't, I couldn't, I don't know if I just didn't see it, but what are the, what are the pruning guidelines that you're going to follow, like, how much are you going to prune the tree?
Oh, I'm guessing it's less than 10% now.
Okay.
We made an effort previously, when we were still talking about two-story, do we move it, do we shift it, how do we work this out? I went to the site, and I worked with a climber to physically tag branches, measure them, and determine how much would have been required at the prior two-story, five feet closer level, and that was ballpark 15% canopy. And because we're five feet further away in one story, it's going to be in the 8%, maybe, maybe 50% range.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Part of that is because we still have to do all the low branches that are within six feet of the ground, those have to come up regardless, that's county fire standard.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I want to ask a policy question. What is the relationship between the county fire department standards and our approval process? Because I know at one time there was some debate about, like, sprinklers and whether or not we required, so what is the relationship? Do we enforce the county fire department standards, or not?
We enforce them as long as they are adopted by city council.
Okay.
And by, and by BAP. So in this case, regarding the tree canopy piece, and it's per fire standard. When you get into sprinklers, it's a different story.
So do we have our list of the ones we're supposed to enforce, that we can-
I don't have those on hand right now, but-
But you can make them, so that we know what we're-
The tree piece is certainly something that's within fire.
The second question is, this condition was not already in here, is that correct? In your-
Which condition?
Yeah, which condition specifically? Are we talking about-
Chain link fence, chain link fence.
The condition that was in there is that there be something surrounding the tree to protect it, but it wasn't specifically chain link.
Yeah, it's condition eight, attachment A.
Condition eight.
Yeah.
Attachment A.
Says maintain tree protection fencing, it just doesn't call out what the fencing is.
It's on page five of nine.
Five of nine, sorry.
Agree to coordinate the arborist to treat protection fencing in good order throughout the construction, so is that sufficient to meet this-
It's a general statement, pretty typical of what we see for these types of, however, I have talked to many arborists, including Mr. Naba, and while I'm not necessarily thrilled with the chain link option, the reasons and rationale for the chain link option does make a lot of sense from a protection standpoint for the tree.
It's much more of a visual barrier to the people doing the construction.
Exactly, exactly. What we find with contractors, and I'm not dissing contractors right now, but in certain circumstances, there are times where contractors go in and they assume one thing and then do another, and then typically a tree ends up being the repercussions of that. Here, having the chain link fence in place and solid gives no room for imagination on where and what.
So since that's a condition that the neighbors wanted, and that the applicant said they would do, shouldn't we have to put that in the-
Yeah, that'll be a modification to condition eight.
Okay, so you're going to give us one?
The recommendation that I made was to approve the project with an added condition, that there be a chain link fence added.
Okay, so we need to-
We'll get back to that after deliberations.
That would be part of your motion.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, our next speaker is Sigrid Bressler.
Hello, Sigrid Bressler, and a neighbor to Ron Cano and his family. At this point, I just want to thank all the commissioners, everyone here in this room, for listening to our concerns. I did not want any hard feelings for our neighbor, but we truly did have concerns, and I'm glad that you addressed all of them. So that's it, I just want to thank everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Larry Steingold, this is on item two.
Yes, sir. I think protecting, Larry Steingold, I think protecting oak trees is great, and you're doing a wonderful job. I have two oak trees, one is about five inches from my house, and I'm waiting for fire standards and new rules and laws to say, hey, move the tree, in which case I'd like everybody to remove the fees, and make it easier to do this without having been tortured. So if this makes sense, and you can all make it happen, great. Also, there are two properties coming available in town that have lots of oak trees, which I'm not sure you people have planned for. Legacy, which used to be Chapparal, and Matilla Ha Junior, because those properties are going to become available for other tenants and for what have you. So maybe you should have committees established to be ahead of the curve, so you can provide proper zoning and variances and deal-making to get what they want, so we can get what we want.
You do recognize that zoning is-
I know, but I miss-
At the sole discretion of the city council.
I know, but I miss public speaking, so that was, this is my way to segue it in. But seriously, there are oaks there, they need to be protected too, as do my oaks in here, but if it comes down to the fire department, or the insurance company says, listen, you got to move it, or get rid of it, because this thing is this big, and it's a big branch, big stone tree. That's also partially hollow, but that's beside the point. It'd be nice to get rid of the fees, and to make it easier to just do it, all right? But the committees for the properties that have all these trees, you really should get ahead of it, because they're going to become available, and they're going to be coming before you for changes and variances, and you need to have a plan. Not wait until the city goes, oh, can we acquire these? Can we do something with them? Are we going to beat away tenants? Because that's what's going to happen. So, control it or not, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That won't happen in our lifetime.
Last card I have is Bill Miley.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I have a general question, issue about construction within the oak tree drip lines. It's all based on a event that happened in 1977 here, when Cookie and I bought a house in the Golden West Track. It had a 200 to 300-year-old oak tree, which is one of the reasons, the main reason we bought it. The contractor screwed up, it was a concrete foundation with the plumbing underneath before they framed it, somebody drove a tractor over the concrete in the kitchen, and when they found out that the plumbing didn't work, they had to put in outside the house plumbing around the oak tree.
For trenching, yeah.
And they trenched around the perimeter of the oak tree deeply, without a permit. We called an arborist in, they said water, we watered a lot, we ended up moving in a couple of years, but three years later, it died.
The timing was impeccable.
It's sad to drive by that house and not see that big oak tree. So I'm concerned about the general issue of construction within the drip line of oak trees, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on agenda item number two? Sherry, is there anyone in the waiting room?
No.
With a hand raised?
No.
Okay, then we're going to close the public comment portion of this public hearing, and come back to deliberations by the commission. I did have one question. I did not see any mention in any of the documentation here about construction within the drip line of this or any other tree, except the one tree that was going to be removed. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I also recall that there is a portion, I think, of the municipal code that has to do with when you can do construction with regard to the habits of nesting birds. You recall, there's something in there, but I think that still involves, it's somehow tied into working within the drip line of a tree where there are nesting birds. I may be wrong about that, but is that an issue here at all?
It's not an issue here, and part of an arborist's report, and what they're required to report in their report, is whether or not there are nesting birds.
Well, they're not, they're not there all year round, so it may be hard to tell.
Well, that's true.
Yeah. But, but if we're not working within the drip line of any tree, much less a protected tree, then it sounds like we don't have an issue anyway.
That's correct.
Okay.
What is the timeframe of the building starting? Do you know? Does anybody know?
From the time in which they submit for plan check, issued permits, and then have their reconstruction meeting, and then break ground, maybe 60 days, maybe longer. It depends on how quickly they can move forward with their construction documents, which are not as substantial as what we're seeing here. We're seeing surface level versus construction level.
Okay.
The other thing, as I understand it, once a building permit has been issued, then the applicant has to, or the permitee, I guess at that point, has to demonstrate substantial progress within 180 days, but there is no legal limit on a finish date for the work.
Correct.
Okay.
I have one more quick question. Attachment A, page 5 of 9, number 5, condition, mentions a pre-construction tailgate meeting. I don't know what that is.
That's a meeting where the arborist meets with the contractor, and whomever the contractor invites, I believe, the subs, and they talk about the scope of work and the parameters of the construction.
Okay, and then it's-
In addition to that, typically, staff is involved in that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Which would be either Mara, or the building inspector, or the building official.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because it says attendance shall be recorded.
And they got to bring a truck, otherwise they wouldn't-
Otherwise, they can't put the plans down on the tailgate, yeah.
I studied in Wisconsin with them.
The other thing is, it really boils down to the level of detail that we're looking for, making sure everybody's on the same page prior to work commencing. making sure everybody's on the same page prior to, to work commencing. Public work is also getting involved in this as well.
Yeah. And, and again, the conditions that you guys have outlined are, are, are straight from the arborist, basically, right? Yeah.
Those particular conditions, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. As I see it so far, we have talked about a potential modification to condition number five on page five of nine. Do we continue with the word pre-construction? Or do we go with some other phraseology there?
I'm, I'm okay with pre-construction. I was just wondering why the prior to groundbreaking was taken out, but it just looks like it was rephrased.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine with me. And then in condition eight, I think the suggestion that would be easiest to make here would be to insert the phrase chain link between tree protection and fencing.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We don't need to add another condition. We can just modify the one that's there.
Sounds good.
Were there, were there any other issues that, that a commissioner recognizes that we may need to work on the resolution? Then let's have some overall thoughts. Mr. Bennett?
I'm very pleased with the process and the outcome. And as a result, I'm leaning towards, I'm voting in, in favor of the plan.
Okay. Vice Chair Trent?
I agree. I'm happy with the collaboration between the neighbors and the city. I feel like we've come to a, a good spot and feel like parties are, are happy.
Very good.
The tree's happy.
I agree. This is great collaboration. And we appreciate the applicant's willingness to, to work these plans until everybody's happy. Thank you.
I agree as well. I, I'm pleased that this commission can work with applicants and neighbors to get them to collaborate. And I think having a very dialogue-oriented, public input and discussion naps that, and I think we should keep it up because it's working.
Okay. I, I agree. I, I think it's, it's a lovely project. As many people have heard before from me, I feel like you should be able to do what you do and what you want with your own stuff unless it bothers the neighbors. And if it bothers the neighbors, go talk to the neighbors.
Or the trees.
Work it out.
Or the trees.
Well, and a tree, I think, has probably been silent. But, but I, I appreciate the spirit of cooperation amongst all the folks that are here and the good work of staff, not only to get this thing cleared to where everything is legal in the first place, but then to work with the applicant and neighbors to come up with a solution that everybody's happy with. And I, my hat's off to staff for that.
Let me, let me add to that. I, I really appreciate the fact that even though this commission burdens you with having to negotiate with, with neighbors and so forth, I, I appreciate your doing it with, with enthusiasm and a smile.
Well, I think it prevents problems down the, down the road.
Yeah, it really does.
Addressing things on the front end saves a lot of money on the back end.
All right, well, I think at this point, if, if we've had our thoughts aired, then a motion with regard to item two as amended specifically on condition eight. I think that's the only change we have.
I so move.
You move, okay. Second by Commissioner Murphy. Any discussion? All right, Sherry, would you call the roll on item two as amended?
Closey?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Terrific. Come, come see staff about a building permit when the time is right. And good luck with your project.
Yeah.
Looks like a great thing.
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations. It's going to be neat.
That's probably, that's the last empty space in Persimmon Hill, isn't it?
I think it is.
Wow.
Filled out, wow.
I think that there was a movie film there, Easy A. I think had a, they had a house there. It's right down the street, yeah. And I think they want to film again at some point, so you never know.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, we're on to item three, future agenda items. And I see a big blank, two weeks hence, staring us in the face.
You haven't looked at Lucas's board.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, is that there's lots of projects that are hanging in the balance of being scheduled. However, at this time, we're not seeing any of those moving forward by the sixteenth.
Lucas, we did notice a?
Wait a second.
Tonight is the deadline for putting things
Actually, hold on, hold on. I just did a concept review notice that's going in the paper on Friday. And that is for a project on Ojai Avenue. It's a vacant lot. So we're going to see a concept review on the sixteenth. Sherry, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, it's been a busy week.
What's the address?
Uh, is it six oh eight East Ojai?
Yes.
Okay.
What's in that, on that property now?
It's vacant.
That's the, that's the empty one acre parcel? At Bald Street?
Oh, I know where that is.
No.
No, 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 no. It's on the north side of Ojai Avenue.
Is it?
I'm sorry?
It's on the north side.
Start of the gas station.
Yeah, it's just the west of the gas station.
Oh, 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 okay. Yes, it has frontage on Ojai Avenue as well as on Waite Street.
Correct.
Okay, interesting.
So we'll see that one.
We'll be happy to see that, okay?
No decisions with concept review, but certainly welcoming lots of comments.
Cool.
Very good.
And in this, for the sixth, the, the appeal, the individual that is a part of the appeal has asked for it to be scheduled on the sixth. We were looking at actually doing it on the sixteenth. He's going to be out of, I believe he's on vacation or out of state at that time on business. So we've opted for the sixth, so we're scheduled then.
Okay. And I'm sure you have more than the two pending items listed here.
Yeah, there are several, although we only listed two here. I tend to like to put the ones that are really close on the pending list, so.
Fourteen forty daily.
We have lots of applications in right now.
Been there before.
Yeah, yes. I'm not going to talk much about that one, but it certainly will be a riveting conversation.
Three, oh, and three twenty Bryant, okay.
Yes, three twenty Bryant is the affordable housing project.
And that's because it's multi-story that it comes to us?
It comes to you because it's a design review permit. So it requires, any design review permit requires planning, commission review and consideration.
Okay.
But I will caution that we are only allowed to use the objective standards of our code, not any subjective standards, given the parameters of what we're looking at here for affordable housing. Lots to discuss and unpack for that as well.
What's the zoning for that, the three twenty Bryant?
The zoning for three twenty Bryant is SPL overlay. The base zoning is M1. So SPL overlay allows for the more density and affordable housing.
Yep, the SPL overlay kind of trumps all the, all the base zoning.
Correct. If so, choose to use.
If, yeah.
Not required.
If they choose to put affordable housing in because of the SPL, then a lot of the provisions of the base zoning not apply.
So that's as far as the conversation is going to go. I don't want to get into too much detail on it.
No, that's just, that's just the way the code reads.
Correct, correct. But I don't want a deliberation at this point.
I think we have a record.
All right.
We have a new record.
Well, I have one other thing here. After we had gone by public comment and had gotten into item two, I'm sorry, into item one, I got another card requesting an opportunity to speak under public comment. Would anyone? We, we have seen public comment in two different sessions at city council. And I'm?
I'm okay with it.
I have no objection to reopening.
Larry Steingold?
I segwayed in with my thing to get on the legacy, the Chaparral land and?
The fees.
Matilla, Matilla. You've got to get ahead of it.
He's very good at that sort of thing.
Very good. So you, you've satisfied your public comment, yeah. Very good. Is there any other business before the commission that you know of? Lucas, Epi?
Well, we, we have director's reports, commission reports.
Yeah.
I do have some things to report when we get to director's report. I wanted to provide to the, to the commission.
Subcommittee reports. I don't know that we have anything going right now. Director's report.
Thank you. So I wanted to, I was going to mention one thing, but I think I'm going to mention two since something came up earlier. First is the sixth cycle housing element. I've received notification from HCD that there are no further comments regarding our latest revisions. Had a recent Zoom meeting with them, and it looks like we're trending towards certification, which should be arriving on my desk in the next ten to fourteen days.
Congratulations.
Okay, but certification is not exactly the same as no further comments, but it implies certification will be coming?
Certification is certification, meaning no additional revisions to the housing element based on HCD's comments. So, and in meeting with them and having that conversation, they have no other comments, meaning they don't want to see any other revisions.
So the version that we saw earlier that was passed by the city council, that's?
Correct, back in May, that, that most recent adopted with minor revisions that came before city council. No revisions from that, from that document.
Once they certify, we'll put online an actual final version.
Final version.
Not the red line version.
So you've been crawling across the desert seeing this, this mirage in the distance called certification, and it's starting to look more real.
Apparently, it's a real thing, which we're super excited about.
And it's eight years, right? Eight years?
It's an eight, yes.
It's through twenty-nine.
You've got six left.
Yes, it's through twenty-two, twenty-nine. But just to be fair, the methodology stuff with SCAG starts almost two years in advance, so. I mean, but we've got eight years. Well, eight, eight years minus the two that we've been working through this process. So that's exciting news I wanted to provide to this body because I know you've been, you sat through this process.
Congratulate you on your work and your patience.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it is a process. So I'm, I'm glad that we were able to navigate it and work with HCD.
So as part of that, as I recall, tell me if I'm wrong, that those revisions included a commitment or a plan to hire a contractor to implement some of the, of the steps, like revising the code to meet state standards?
There, yeah, there's several programs, nineteen in total, that we are obligated to, to work through over the next six years. I brought those programs before this body before. We're working behind the scenes to bring those forward in a strategy.
Were you still expecting us and you to do that? Or are we going to hire a contractor to do that? Because that's what applied, as I recall, in the?
I think it was, look, I, I don't want to get into the details of the program pieces at this point, but it, it entails revisions being brought forward as a discussion item before this body as well as, as city council. Any sort of changes, which this would be legislative changes to the zoning code would come before this body. So whether that's done by a third party or done in-house remains to be seen.
I see, okay.
The second piece that I wanted to mention was to a point that was brought up by Chair Akins of the Historic Preservation Commission. I know he's super excited to bring anybody and everybody who's interested in seeing any of the buildings that are on this, this campus and beyond within his capacity. If you are interested in doing it, I wanted to offer two things. One is, let's stay away from a serial meeting, meaning no more than two commissioners. I think we all know that, but I just wanted to make that known. And then second, if, if you're interested in doing it, certainly staff can help coordinate that as well. So just want to put those two things out there. And with that, that's, that's all I have. The first one was a much bigger piece, but the second one was just a housing item.
Appreciate it.
First one's really good news.
Yeah, it is. I'm excited.
Does that take us off the bad list?
I think, I think it does, kind of.
Gets us off the pending list.
I think that we're ahead of the trend on a lot of the other cities that are in Ventura County.
That's huge.
I mean, if you're keeping count on the number of cities that have certification, we're certainly ahead of, of most right now.
Does that mean, I think the last time we spoke about it, no one in Ventura County had been?
The only one that I, I think the last time we spoke about it would have been Ventura County. But they went a different, went a different timeline altogether. So it's kind of not fair.
Wow, that's awesome.
Okay, any commissioners have reports to make? Very good. Can we hear from our city council liaison?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm pleased to, to be your new liaison. So this was, this was really wonderful. Very good news about the housing element. I look forward to better understanding the nineteen programs or whatever they are that we need to implement. Also, as we move forward with the affordable housing, I think some sort of, you know, outreach or understanding both for this commission and for the city council and for the public at large would be very, very helpful. Just understanding what an overlay, you know, is and how, what that actually means and what kind of things that we're allowed to change and or modify and what kinds of things we aren't. I think the public, if we do move forward with this affordable housing, really needs to understand how the housing element folds in, how, you know, how everything kind of works together, but not in a way that's really complex. So other than that, I'm trying to think what I might be able to liaise with you guys. We did approve $20,000 for, to spend on a consultant on a housing element that I don't think we've spent yet. So we will have that to?
That's more good news.
Yeah, throw into the mix. It's twenty grand floating around to help us move through this. But also, congratulations on the housing element. It's just been quite incredible work. I just asked the city manager, how do we, how, how can we be compliant and have nineteen things to do? You know, and even I didn't understand, well, it's the plan. It's the nineteen things we need to do over the next, you know, seven years or what, you know, however many years we have left. So even people who, I mean, I've read that a million times, don't understand that, all the complexities. And I would very much like to understand exactly how this works. I think it's going to be a major, it's going to be a major item that both planning and city council are going to have to deal with for at least the foreseeable future. So any questions for me, sir?
Thank you. You mentioned clarifying the rules or understanding the rules or whatever. And I'm, I'm wondering, and perhaps this is a question also for our new city manager, have you heard about any plans to bring two hundred odd changes to the text of Title X?
Only from you.
The city council for consideration?
Only from you.
I'm sorry?
Only from you.
Only from you.
Yeah.
Only from you.
You've been talking about it a long time.
And I'm very interested, you know, I, you know, I, I love, I love.
Lucas and Alex and I have been at this for, going on four years now.
I would love to look at those. I mean, I love, you know, my first municipal job.
There's a package floating around somewhere.
Yeah, I know, I know. I need to, I need to really open that up. And as soon as we get down to business on city council, we'll get down to business.
All look forward to that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, so any other sort of, yeah, John?
Just a quick question. So these, these outreach programs or public education? I know you're already doing a lot of that. Is this, is this a continuation of what you're already doing? Or is this like something else that you want to do?
I think if we now have a specific proposal in front of us, so we can talk to that. We can talk about how many units. We can talk about, you know, what percentage of them are low, what percentage of them are low-low, how they, you know, how they get there, what percentage of them are farm workers and how we, how we perceive that.
Do you mean specific to this project?
Exactly. I mean, I think generally as well, but also to drill down because, you know, as, as people start commenting on it, it would be really, really advantageous. it would be really, really advantageous if they understood what they were commenting on.
Absolutely.
So, uh, you know, I just think it's really important, like what does it mean to have nineteen farm worker units? And how does that actually play out in a town like ours? Well, that's a really interesting question. And who decides how this plays out? You know, I think also the application process. And once again, my favorite bill of them all, SB six four nine, which means that the city can write, a process by which local low-rent tenants at risk of, um, displacement due to gentrification can be given first priority on these. The city just simply needs to decide that we want to do that. And then there's some specific things that you do, but then our, our local residents who are at risk of displacement, not only having been displaced, but live with that stress of the potential of being displaced can actually be first on the priority.
Right, a first refusal when there's an opening.
And, and first on the list when it opens up.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that, you know, for everybody who says, you know, I, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't want to open this up to the whole world. What about our local residents? Well, this is exactly the bill that allows that to happen.
And before that, it was not legal to do that.
It was not legal to do that. So you can't, you have to abide by the special, uh, classes that are already, have already been, uh, determined, right? Like you can't, you can't have biases against people, but you can actually use this as a priority, right? And it has to do with, you know, did you get, did you get state money? Did you get tax credits for it? All of which this particular project has. So, um, you know, for me, that's just a game changer. I, I don't even see why, I don't see why people aren't out there like tooting horns and throwing up confetti. I really don't. I personally know in my district at least, you know, five, not elderly women, but, you know, older women who live in, at risk of, you know, losing their place. They're renters. And what do you do when you're seventy? I mean, I'm, I'm on the soapbox here, but why not? What do you do when you're seventy-five years old and all of a sudden you've been told that, you know, your rental unit is not yours any longer? I mean, um, and I particularly feel for, you know, women who were at, at, you know, seventy-five. They don't have jobs, that kind of thing. And I, I know at least five of them. And I keep telling them, we're going to work on how to get you on that list.
This will require some sort of action by the city council to invoke provisions of SB six four nine?
Six one, yes, it will. And so it is on our list of priorities. I have also, um, we did vote five oh to have the city attorney write a brief memo on it, but quite honestly, the, um, authors of the bill have written, you know, if you, if you go to.
You have the wording in front of you that you need already.
Yeah, and, and all of the justification and all, yeah, the way to talk about it, to your point. Like how do you actually explain this? So, um, you know, anytime a bill passes like that, there's, there's a lot of collateral materials that you can pull from. So I did, I, I just wanted it on record with our city attorney and with our council. And I wanted them to know about it and I wanted them to vote on it. So we have a five oh vote to at least understand it.
Councilman Rule, is this, or maybe a connection with, with, uh, Lucas, is this something that the planning commission would eventually have to, uh, have a hearing on and so forth? Or is this not a Title X issue?
I was just talking to the attorney about how this could potentially fit into projects that are coming forward that are affordable housing. Um, with these types of projects, you typically have an affordable housing agreement. And I don't see why that couldn't be baked into that as a standard.
And also this could be.
Condition?
Or condition, yeah.
This also could be tied into our housing element, could, could.
Could be, yes. Uh, it's, it's interesting because anytime you have any of these, um, assembly bills or senate bills, we all know in eight years, they could very well change. And anytime you put those in, you assume that it's going to remain the same, but as the wind blows, a lot of times state decides to do things differently.
Current law.
Yep. That's why they're every eight years. Some, if you don't meet the deadline, it's every four years.
But if we can be proactive and put in a condition related to that, it's interesting.
Yeah, I'm, I, just talking to the attorney, I don't see why we couldn't on these, on these types of projects.
I, I just also wanted to follow up on Councilman Rule's stuff about explaining because, um, I think we are aware of that, that at least when a project comes before us, we'd like to ask about the rules and how, so I think this is a good, this will be a good example of a time where we can actually explain the requirements for certain income levels, all that sort of stuff. Because unfortunately, there's at least one case before when, when I wasn't on the planning commission, that there was an incredible amount of confusion in our community about.
I still think there is. I don't think that's been settled at this point.
No, but I'm hoping that if, as we do this, we can be educating people what the requirements are, not just dealing with this specific, you know, how it fits into affordable housing and, and why we have overlays and what they require and so forth. Because, you know, I've already heard people come to me about aspects, they've heard about this and have opinions without having any idea, you know, what the rules are and why they would be that way. And so I think it's important not to try to dictate to people what they should think, but just let them know the, the legal environment and requirements that we have to operate in. Because, you know, we can only enforce laws. We can't make them.
Well, in certain circumstances, this body can recommend them.
We can recommend, that's true. And maybe sometimes out of one of our cases, we might say to the city council, you know, this is a problem and maybe you guys want to address it.
Leslie, do you know whether the city council is planning to do any community educational forums on affordable housing? It was mentioned at a recent city council meeting that the Democrats had jumped ahead of city council.
The housing committee too, of this body.
Right. So I can, um, I can speak to that a little bit. I think that there was some confusion with the city council over, um, a Democratic club-sponsored, um, unsheltered. I mean, from what I understood, the, the, um, and I didn't attend unfortunately, but that particular, um, teach-in was really about unsheltered and homelessness and at-risk, which is very different than how do you think about affordable housing? So I think that there was some confusion with the city council in understanding because it was then said that, you know, this particular event that the Democratic club had had superseded the, you know, um, housing workshop that we had been talking about. But once again, we have no real, we've never taken it a step further to understand what kind of housing forum we would like to have and who should be included and what should be, um, you know, the objectives and the goals that we're looking to, um, you know, and the educational outreach that we're looking to provide for the citizens. It is still, as I understand, and I think on our priority list, um, but once again, there is, you know, it, it comes down to the same question, um, you know, what do you want this workshop to be, right? And if you can't get agreement on that, um, there's no point in having a workshop, in my opinion. So the council has to work together to decide and to come to sort, some sort of consensus on what we would want an affordable housing workshop to be, what we would want a housing workshop to be. Would it, would, would it be on affordable housing? Would it be on second homes? Would it be on a transfer tax? I mean, what do you, do we want it to be? I personally feel we have to understand the affordable housing questions and income levels and all of that, um, so people can come.
Who are the, excuse me, who are the, um, uh, council members that are on the, is there a subcommittee working on affordable housing?
No.
No.
Okay.
There, there is an ad hoc housing committee.
No, there is an ad, there is an ad hoc homeless, unsheltered committee that, um, all, four of the five council members, because of Brown Act Two, that is Mayor Sticks and Councilmember Lang are one, um, sort of branch of that. And Councilmember Francina and I are another branch of that. And we have a Chinese wall between us for the Brown Act, but that is strictly on dealing with the homeless situation. It, it is not dealing with affordable housing, homeless and supportive, you know, so, but, um, not, not affordable housing per se.
Can I clarify that seminar? Because that seminar was jointly sponsored by this official housing committee. And it grew out of actually, uh, Judy and I meeting with help of Ohi and other groups and thought, you know, we, we learned so much.
Right.
That we knew people didn't know. And then the, the homelessness groups got going with Ruth Meller.
Right.
And we got with them and they had suggested to me resources. So the idea was purely educational.
Right.
About homeless housing transition.
Right.
That sort of thing. And that's all that was. It was not intended to.
Right.
Interfere with anybody. It was just intended to give more information to the community because so many people were asking.
Right.
What can we do about this problem?
Yeah, and I think that I misspoke there by saying that it was the Democratic club because it was indeed the ad hoc committee here.
As well.
Yeah, as well. So, so that was, um, well, had I attended, my bad, I would have known, I wouldn't have misspoke. I would have known. But yes, uh, very clearly, it was your ad hoc committee, which the city council did approve, right? We did approve you to do that and those events.
And this, we actually brought this before this commission and got approval to co-sponsor it. So this was not some kind of rogue thing that we were going around by anybody.
Yeah. So, and I, and I understand that and also.
The council to do it.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I think I may have misremembered because there was a meeting of a city council ad hoc committee and it must have been on parking.
Parking. Now you and I were on that.
And two of us were invited to it.
Yes.
And, and my question to you should have been, do you anticipate another meeting of that committee? Okay, well.
There you go.
I, I assume, I would assume so, but I, I don't know, you know, the goals of that committee were to also deal with the valet parking, um, suit as well as, you know, coming up with, you know, how are we going to deal with parking? And I don't know where all of that lies. I don't, we have had a report back from the ad hoc committee, but we haven't, um, the last, the last thing that we, um, agreed on at city council was that, uh, we would take, um, the, uh, the requests in the suit against us with the, um, advice and counsel of the parking committee and see if they could be merged together. Um, and I don't know where in that process, if that.
We haven't heard anything.
Yeah, and, and I, I have no idea, honestly. Thank, I'm not on that ad hoc committee. But I will find out for you. I will be happy to, to check into that.
Appreciate that.
We'll be back in two weeks.
Okay. All right. I'll see you then. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And I do believe, though I have not met the gentleman, I think we have our new interim city manager present with us. Sir, if you would like to come up and say anything at all, whatever piques your interest, we'd love to hear from you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm happy to come by and see you all. I am, um, having a good time working with Lucas and Epi. Epi, right?
James, James gave you a great staff to work with.
Yes. Yeah, and there are not very many of them.
No.
But they're good.
But they are really good.
They worked their tails off.
It's, uh, aces and spaces, as we say.
They, they're true, they're true professionals. I mean, and I say that in all sincerity. I've worked with a lot of people in the planning field in many different cities. I've been a planning director myself in other cities. Um, and I will tell you that, uh,
You have our sympathy.
Really solid group of people.
Yeah.
Just not very many of them. Um, and I appreciate the good work that you all do. I'm, I'm very fond of people who step up to do planning commission work because frankly, I don't know how anybody ever agrees to take on that task. I'm always reminded when I get my, my paycheck that I may be doing the same kind of work, but I'm getting paid for it. And so I really appreciate that you all step up and do it the way you do. The community counts on it.
There, there are a lot of people in this city who will help you if you ask.
Yeah. I've, I've been getting lots of help.
Heard from some of them tonight, obviously.
I, it's a, it's a fascinating town and, and people are, are so involved in their community uh, in ways that I rarely see. This is my tenth city manager job. And I, I have rarely seen this level of interest from people and you got to love that. I mean, the, this is why I do city manager work. I love community. And, uh, this community loves what Ohi stands for. And I'm happy to be here and have a chance to work with you. I'll be an asterisk on your history. I'll be the guy that was between great James Vega and great, hopefully, the next person. And, um, so I'll, but during that time that I'm here, I'll try to be the best asterisk that I can be and serve you as well as I can. So thank you.
And we, we appreciate your long commute. I know you got to drive quite a ways.
I, I, yeah, I demonstrated my ignorance in taking this on.
Well, we're closer than Downey.
You're, you're a tiny bit closer than Downey, but it's way prettier to drive.
No LA freeways to drive on to get here.
I'll tell you, this is, this is almost invigorating to drive this drive. But between Castaic and here, it's really a pleasure to do this.
It's not called Shangri-La for nothing.
I can see that, yeah. They don't call Fresno that either, but don't tell them. All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Uh, seeing no other obvious business before the commission at seven twenty-seven, we're adjourned. Thank you all.